I'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mrs. Chupdo?
Here.
Mr. Basic?
Here.
Mr. De Culliac.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September twenty-third meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to approve PC nine twenty-three twenty-five minutes.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Any old business? On to new business, Zach.
Thank you. First application is PC twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Property address is twenty-nine fifty Graham Road. This property is about one point five or one point six acres in zone R three, and we're here for a conditional use. And just for reference, right across the street is Oregon Trails Park, and to the west is Woodland School. So, sorry. So on the property is an existing building at sixty-five hundred square feet. This is a conditional use for a group home for persons with disabilities. Our code defines that as a residential facility that provides room and board, personal care, habilitative or rehabilitative services, and supervision for at least nine persons with disabilities. According to the applicant, this will contain seventeen beds. They also stated that the plan is to use existing beds and bathrooms as they are now. Residents will live there. There would be a caretaker, at least one caretaker at all times on the property. During the day, residents will leave for vocational training or job placement, and meals would be brought in from another location, and they would only have access to refrigerators and microwaves. This property was previously approved, most recently as an eight-unit apartment in two thousand and twenty. Before that, it was used as an assisted living facility. There are three supplemental regulations for this use. Number one is that the facility shall accommodate no more than twelve beds per acre. Based on one point five eight acres, they can have up to nineteen beds in this facility, so they meet that requirement. All applicable provisions of the fire code shall be met. Fire code, verification of the fire code compliance will take place during the building permit process. And then number three, disdain that the use shall not change the character of the area, create congestion, or adversely impact the area. In no event shall the facility be closer than five hundred feet from where another such facility is located. And there are no other group homes within five hundred feet of this property, so they meet that requirement as well. Besides that, that's all I have for this review. The applicant is here. If you have any questions, they did submit a, these are old versions of a site plan and building layout, just if they need that for reference. But happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Anyone here that wants to make a statement? You have to come up here and push the button and turn the green light on. State your name and address.
My name is Cheryl Cook. It's three nine nine eight Villas Drive.
And you swear that what you're about to say will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So this property at one time was commercial when it was the assisted living. Then it was changed to residential when they were going to convert it into apartments. Or is it now being changed back to a commercial? We're not quite understanding what conditional use is.
I can help you. Uh, conditional use, um, so in the zoning code, there are uses permitted by right, which can be approved administratively. And then there are conditional uses which require further review and approval through planning commission and city council before they can be approved at all or issued permits. So it's just uses identified in the code that require further review. Basically, the use is group homes for persons with disabilities. Under the building code, that would likely be a commercial use. Under the zoning code, it's just another use that we have. So it's, it'd still be, you know, like a residential facility, people living there, but there would be a commercial aspect to it.
So it's not being designated as a commercial property? It's going to remain a residential property?
Correct. They are not rezoning it. This will remain as an R-two zoning district.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Does anyone have anything else to say or a motion? I move, I move that we, oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Sorry.
My name is Chris Van Note. I live at four zero zero eight Villas Drive.
Okay.
My question is-
And what you're about, you swore what you're about to say will be the truth.
Yes.
Thank you.
My question is, will this, how long will these individuals be there? Is it something on a permanent basis? Is it, are they going to be cycled in and out? You know, when their rehab services are done?
I would defer to the applicant.
Is the applicant here? Yeah.
Hi.
State your name and address.
My name is Chandra Gosmer. I'm also one of the resident of Stowe, forty-four seventeen Forest Hill Road.
And you swear that what you're about to say will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Go ahead.
So I work for Mr. Bania for this property. So regarding your questions, so these, all these clients that we're getting are directly from Summit County DODD's program. And all these clients that we're getting are based on the referral that they're looking for specific housing needed. It depends on the contract. It could be from one year to five years. And they are in desperate need for housing. That's why we get the referral, and we're trying to get this set up for them.
So the minimum length of time that they'll commit to would be one year?
Minimum is one year, yes.
Okay. And is that decided when they move in? How long it's going to be?
There, Summit, Summit Diddy will give us the contract.
Uh huh.
And if the client is feeling, you know, depends on how they're feeling, they can change anytime. But usually, it's one to five years contract.
What's a typical disability you'll be treating?
Good evening.
Once again, state your name and address.
My name is Summit Bania. I live in thirty-seven Vesper Street, Akron, Ohio, four four three one zero. And whatever I'm about to say will be the truth.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chandra. Addison to what he was saying. I'm also part of this initiation. So basically, this is what it looks like. So we get referrals through portal from Summit Diddy. And when we are getting referrals, we look into client's contract. So what, all the contract would say how many years they will be residing with us. And we cannot make that decision, but Summit Diddy does. And whenever we get referrals, like I said, we look into that. And we see, okay, so client A will be residing in our facility for one year. That's when the contract ends. And if they like it, they will add more years as they go. So like he said, it ranges from one year to five year. Most of the clients that we haven't started our business, of course, but when we are looking into referrals that we get, it can also go up to ten years. Yep, because they have always been living in Summit County. And because they have developmental disabilities, they've been with Summit Diddy for years to the point that they know exactly the level of care client needs.
So these disabilities are typically not ones that are going to be rehabbed away? They're still going to be there?
I beg your pardon?
In other words, when they come in with a disability, it's not a disability typically that can be solved with rehab in six months?
So it is a developmental disability that our clients have?
Okay, alright.
So as you, when I say developmental, like, you know?
I'm with you.
So, yes. And then most of our clients, they also have dual diagnosis as well, which they get services as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
So adding to that, we, we do, so based on the referral, we look at their case. They have different level ABCs. And depending on their case, we do have to employ their case, their caregivers, because these are twenty-four hour services for each of the individuals. So it depends on their case, how severe it is. So looking at the levels of the client, they could have twenty-four hours caretaker or either eight hours, you know, they be split between one or two, you know? So we could have, we're saying sixteen or under, or seventeen or under clients in the building. So that means we're looking from fifteen to forty-five employees potentially working in twenty-four hour cycle.
Okay. Has to be recorded. No, no, you're fine.
Okay. So, so my question is, this is short-term rehab rather than long-term placement?
So it actually varies.
You have to step up to the-
Step up.
Sorry. So it actually varies. Like I said earlier, we do not make that decision. What, who does this is Summit Diddy.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And then, like I said, we get referrals through portal. And then we would look into client's severity of needs and their level of care. So because this is going to be a twenty-four hour facility, like I said, it can range from one year to five years to even ten years. And it all depend on client's diagnosis, the level of care they have, and things like that.
So it's based on a level of care, not a long-term housing?
That is correct.
Okay. Not that that matters, because I think it's a good thing that you're doing. But just to be, just to be clear, because we are the condos next door, and we did have a problem a few years ago, so we're just trying to clarify. So you'll be under the guise and supervision of the health department and direction home and that kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
So because this is commercial, and like I said, we're getting referrals through portals, like Summit Diddy, for example, we have to obviously follow the protocols and guidelines and things like that. Obviously, yes, for sure.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you.
No problem. So adding to that, safety is probably one of the concerns a lot of people have. Safety is our biggest priority. And for all the residents around there, especially, you know, we have school next door. We have worked with simultaneous with other agencies as well. Silicon Fire Security is one of them that we're working with, as well as other entities. So we have decided to install obviously cameras, ensure that, you know, nobody's just walking in or out. Obviously, somebody's going to be in the front, taking care of the, you know, visitors. There are restricted hours for visitors to come in and out. And for all the clients that are going out, you know, there are activities that they will follow. Do we always have caretakers watching them or, you know, make sure that they're okay with that? We don't want anybody roaming around, around the property, or neither our clients running around and feeling unsafe, you know? So we want to ensure that everybody's safe around us, as well as those who are living close to us.
Okay.
Can I come back?
Sure.
So, so it's not my concern about the surrounding residents. It's more about your residents, so that they are safe and in a secured facility and being cared for. When you, when you started talking about the caregiver, is that a service that you're providing? Or are you bringing in outside caregivers to, through the agencies?
They are going to be our employees.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So Mr. Bania has multiple different businesses here in the Summit County. We do have a home app agency as well. And through that, we do have employees who can provide work for us. And also, we do have a daycare facility too. So a lot of these clients would go to the daycare facility in Graham.
Oh, in adult daycare?
Yeah, adult daycare, yeah, we do, yeah.
Where is that?
The one in Fish Creek Road, San Diego.
Oh. I didn't realize that was in adult daycare.
Yeah, there was.
Okay. Okay, I, thank you.
Sure.
No problem. I'm happy to answer any other questions. Absolutely.
My, my question is about, is about traffic. How much traffic do you anticipate on Cherry Creek Acres? And what types of vehicles? Are you talking cars? Are you talking small buses, trucks?
So, yeah, regarding that, there won't be a lot of, obviously, during the daytime, obviously, vans would come in to pick the clients for their daycare. Besides that, nothing much. Obviously, a couple of staff would come in and out. But besides that, there won't be a lot of traffic, traffic. Because we understand that it is very, very private, and we don't want to make any kinds of distraction for anybody, you know?
Okay.
So there would not be people, family members visiting the people in the, in the facility?
They can visit definitely, but they have to give us prior notice, because obviously Summit Diddy directly handles their case. And it depends on their visiting hours too. They can't just come at midnight, unless they're enlisted in their ER, you know, list. But depending on their case and their situation, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And in addition to what my coworker is saying here, we provide different kind of other transportation services as well. So under Bania LLC, we also have medical, non-medical transportation services. That's the same services we'll be using to transport our residents from point A to point B. That actually eliminates a lot of traffic as well. So for sure. And I'm assuming all the residents we're going to have in the future, they are not going to have their own vehicle, so, yeah.
Any other comments? Any questions? Motion?
I motion for approval of PC twenty-two-five dash zero twenty-eight.
My second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve PC twenty-two-five dash zero two eight. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chupdo?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. On to the next item, please.
Thank you. Our next item is PC twenty-five dash thirty. This is for Saint Cobain at thirty-eight forty Fish Creek Road. Property is nine and a half acres in zone I-one, limited industrial. This application is for a sign variance. And for reference, this is just north of, we're already into exporting goods is in the Meyer. Alright, so on the site plan, the proposed sign will be on the north end of the front of the building, or if you're driving on Fish Creek, it'd be on the right side of the building. They want to include a street view image just to show that it's, that side of the building is already pretty well blocked from existing trees on the property. On that side of the building, there are three existing signs. They have a about ninety-five square foot sign, twenty-five square feet, and then forty, fifty-four square feet, which is a total of one hundred and seventy-four currently. We allow up to a hundred square feet. So they are already exceeding that requirement. The proposed sign is for a Norpro sign. This would be twenty-seven square feet, which would bring the total to two hundred and one square feet on the building. Again, our maximum is a hundred square feet. So this is a variance to exceed the maximum allowable sign area by a hundred and one square feet. That's all I have for this application. I will say, under the code update, they would be well under the maximum allowed sign area, so. Thank you.
I think, we have one other person.
Yeah, we're putting up a sign just like-
First, first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
State your name and address.
My name is Nazaboss. I'm at two thirty-five thirty-six Celestine Way, Columbia Station, Ohio.
And you swear that you're about to say it's the truth?
Yes.
Thanks. Go ahead.
So we're putting up two signs for this business, one where we pointed out there. And then there's an existing monument sign that we're putting one in its place. We are asking for a little bit of variance, but it's going to be within the same businesses that are already existing there. Yeah, that's pretty much it. If you guys have any questions.
Is Norpro a new business within the company?
They're existing ceramic existence, so they're just changing their building.
Okay. Questions?
So Norton Laboratories is a different business? It's not part, it's not Norpro?
That, I couldn't know the details of it, honestly. From what I hear, they got a ceramic and plastic incorporated. So there might be- Because I noticed that too, it seemed like a different logo on top of it, yeah.
The company is split a couple of times.
So there might be a sister company.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one question before you go. Is that going to, is that going to bring additional personnel to the area as far as employment?
Oh, that I couldn't answer, to be honest with you.
Just curious, that's all.
It's one of my buddy's project and he's retiring, so I kind of took over. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience who care to comment? Okay. Well, I move that we approve PC twenty-two-five dash zero three zero.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded. And we approve. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chupdo?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Onto the zoning code update.
Yeah, big crowd. Alright. Yeah, so before we get into it, just kind of want to go over the process and how we got here. This process began in March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, when we entered a contract with Housal Levine. They're headquartered in Chicago, and with Housal Levine is Hema, who will be presenting tonight. The firm is an award-winning planning and zoning firm. They've worked with over four hundred communities on the comprehensive plans and zoning codes. And this really stemmed from when we did a diagnostic report in two thousand and twenty-two, which identified several issues in our existing zoning code, which include lack of organization, missing definitions, discouraging housing diversity, restraint commercial code requirements, and inability to keep pace with modern zoning and planning practices. So the goal was to address those issues and to create a user-friendly code that reduces barriers to development, promotes sustainability, and ensures compliance with federal and state laws. I think we've accomplished that with this code. The consultant early on has had several meetings, met with department heads, and early meeting with planning commission, our steering committee, and city council, bless you.
Bless you.
Our steering committee is made up of eleven members, which were involved from the very beginning. That included Mario Fioka, Kyle Herman, Kyle Felman from city council, Dan Basic, and Jeff Wagner from planning commission, Greg Seifert from Board of Zoning Appeals, Jason Gates from Commission on Inclusion, Patrick Crawford from Parks Board, Andy Bo Tang from Urban Forestry Commission, Kate Arnold, a local business owner, and Mike Merle from Fog Building Methods. So just want to call everyone out for the service and volunteering to be part of this process. Their insight has been very valuable. There's also state core meetings early on, which included meetings with local business owners, local institutions, commercial developers, residential developers, architects, real estate brokers, and other professionals. During the summer of two thousand and twenty-four, we had an active community survey, which brought in about four hundred responses from the community. And we also had a public open house on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, to get more feedback from the public. At that time, we started drafting the code, which included probably two hundred hours of staff time to review. We had seven steering committee meetings. We had many individual meetings, individual meetings with steering committee members. To go over the code in more detail, staff presented to planning commission several times and had discussions with planning commission, city council, both in meeting and individual meetings. We met with Urban Forestry and Board of Zoning Appeals several times throughout the process as well. And on top of that, we also tried to get the word out to the public more through library meetings and pop-ups in the park. And we had our final open house on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. So that brings us to today for the final code. So after this meeting, hoping we get a recommendation tonight as we go to council for three readings to hopefully have this wrapped up on December fourth. The plan is to make this effective a couple of months after the fact, after adoption, so that we have time to update all of our information and permits and our fee schedule to align with the code. So with that, I will turn it over to Hema for the presentation.
Alright. Thank you so much, Zach, for the detailed introduction on the project. So tonight's meeting purpose for the zoning code update is to go over major changes we have done to all the chapters in the code. That includes all the feedbacks we have received from steering committee throughout this year, all the input, input from city staff, and any feedback from public throughout the outreach process. The agenda would include the project introduction, how it started, the major changes throughout the chapters, and the next steps, as Zach mentioned. So the purpose of the zoning code is to make sure the zoning code is aligned with the comprehensive plan of the city. It's very easy to read for everyone. It integrates design standards, the district and uses are modernized. It streamlines the desirable development in the present and part of future, and also to make sure it aligns with state and federal regulations. So what is the difference between comprehensive plan and planning and zoning code? So the comprehensive plan is a roadmap. It gives us a detail about how the community should look like, but it doesn't have a teeth to regulate the future and present development. So that's where the planning and zoning code comes into the picture. It regulates and create regulations for the vision that cities envisioning, envisioning for its future and present. And we have implemented all those requirements into the code update. So in the scope of work, we are on the seventh step. As Zach mentioned, we're going to go through the city council meeting after this. For the proposed zoning code, we have divided that code into fourteen chapters. The first four chapters are regarding base overlay and use standards. All of this going to include all the zoning districts, overlay districts, and all the land use standards of the code. Chapter five, six, seven, eight, and nine is going to include all the design development and parking related standards that how the proposed and any changes that would need in existing development would be needed, would need to go through this proposed development standards. The chapter ten is sign standards. Floodplain development is the eleventh one, and the review, non-confermities, and definitions. The first chapter, general provisions. So we have not made any major changes to this chapter. Just took all the mandatory information, general provisions needed throughout the code into one chapter that includes all the purpose and applicability through, which is applicable throughout the code sections, improvement plan, and some of the engineering language, compliance of landscape, right of way, and zoning and building. improvement plan, and some of the engineering language, compliance of landscape right-of-way, and zoning and building permit. So, the chapter two is going to be zoning districts. The purpose of this chapter is to consolidate all the zoning districts as needed, and simplify the dimensional standards of them, and make sure they're consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, on the left side in the table, you see these are all existing base districts from residential, commercial, to industrial and conservation districts. So, we have not made any major changes to R-one, R-two, and R-three districts, but RB-to-C-eight districts are all existing commercial districts, and we saw a similar type of development, and all the similar types of regulations within this, like overlapping within this district. So we consolidated all of this into three districts, C-one, C-two, and C-three. There are two industrial districts. They also look similar in development, and according to the feedback we received from the steering committee, we just consolidated that into one district. And we have kept the conservation district as-is, and proposed a new PI, Public Institutional District. This is going to include all the public properties. The city has currently, all the parcels are going to be rezoned into this PI district, and a new PD, Major Plan Development District. So this is the existing zoning map the city have currently. It's so very hard to read. Too many overlay districts, too many base districts, and it also includes some mudbrook, bedland, some of the overlays that would be updated throughout in the state code. So may not need some of these overlays on top of the base district. So, this is the proposed zoning map. As I mentioned, we consolidated all the C districts, RB and C districts, into three districts to make sure there is a consistent development throughout neighborhood, community, and regional type of corridors. And we have kept existing mudbrook and seasons overlay district as-is. I'm gonna discuss about that in detail in my next slides, but we took off some of the overlay district from the existing map because we are not seeing any requirement of those regulation in the current code. I believe they're pretty old and are not desirable anymore, so. Also, we have created mixed-use overlay district. I'm gonna talk about it more in detail in my next slides. So, the first one is residential bulk and dimensional standards, R-one, R-two, and R-three. In this chapter, we made sure that we took, we created like tables that looks consolidated together. For example, for residential district, commercial district, PI and O district, and industrial district. So for residential district, in this table, you can see the lot, area, bed, and setback and building standards have been consolidated into one table. We have not made any revisions to lot area, according to the feedback we receive from the steering committee, and we have revised a lot width and some of the setback regulations according to what we saw on ground and feedback we received from the staff. And the diagram you saw on the right side, it shows that if the development, which is coming next to the residential district, which is if it's taller than the residential building, it needs to meet certain transition setbacks or like transition buffer. So there is a, so there is a privacy maintained there. So in C districts, there is no lot area requirement, and we have kept some of the existing regulation as-is, just made sure everything is organized well into one table. So, the next one is industrial district. As I mentioned, we consolidated I-one and I-two into one district, and just consolidated yard setbacks, building standards, and nodes into just one table. So it's pretty much easy to read. And the diagram on your right side, you can see that it's, it will make an applicant easy to understand what the front setback would look like, what the rear setback would look like, street setback, and interior setback. In O and PI districts, so the PI district is the proposed district, we came up with this lot area from what we saw on ground. The two-acre was the smallest lot we were able to find in this PI district, where all the public properties will be included. And for the O district, we saw the three-acre lot was the largest one. So, most of the yard setbacks and building standards you see here are coming from what we found on ground for these two districts. So, this is the proposed base district, major plan development district. It provides opportunity for large-scale development. For example, it applies, the threshold is ten acres. The project is bigger than ten acres. It would, it is applicable to go through major plant development. It gives flexibility to large-scale kind of projects to promote creative and innovative design. But it needs to meet a certain requirement, like the development should have a specific affordable housing, accessible design, or environmentally sustainable development, and needs to also it needs to go through create, creation of unique zoning regulation tailored to specific needs for each development. Alright, so the next one is overlay district standards. This chapter is going to include all the overlays they're gonna have in the proposed chapter. So, mixed-use overlay and minor plan development overlay are two proposed overlays, and season road overlay and mudbrook watershed is, are existing overlays. So, the purpose of this chapter is to establish overlay district of the city, including the district-specific standards in relation to the underlying base districts. So, the first one is mixed-use overlay district. So, the map on your right side, you see that the highlighted portion is going to be mixed-use overlay district. We have created this district to support pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development along Darrow Road. It's going to be within the north of Kent Road and south of Graham Road, to create the walkable and bikeable environment, and also create mixed type of development here. Also gives scope to the standalone buildings. Just something to mention here that the applicant has an ability to keep up with their base district and the uses they have. If they want to go through the overlays, they are, they're happy to go through those. Okay. So, in principle, for the MU district principal users, we are allowing users that are not currently allowed through the base district, the underlying zone. So, this is the list of the permitted users in the MU or district. Alright, so the second one is minor plan overlay district. So, for the minor plan overlay district, the property is less than ten acres. They are eligible to go through this minor plan development districts. In here, in this type of district, the developer can request deviation from the underlying zoning requirement. For example, site development allowances. But for minor plan overlay district, the applicant need to go through Plan Commission and City Council to approve the site plan with all the development standards allowed, based on the modification standards. And as I mentioned, seasons road overlay and mudbrook. Sorry, sorry about that. Okay, so seasons road overlay and mudbrook overlay are two existing overlay district. We have retained the language from the existing code as it is, just cleaned it up, and not major changes have been done to these. So the next chapter is use standards. The purpose of this chapter is Okay, so the purpose of this chapter is to make sure we permit modern land use going forward in the city, and also consolidate the principal accessory and temporary categories into a single chapter. Also include supportive standards to improve review and approval process, and also like streamlining process for clear and more consistent decision-making. So definitely, this is not a complete list of all the new uses, but these are the major uses I have included here. The major uses would be adult-use cannabis facility, microbrewery, winery, distillery, co-working space, tobacco retailer, artisan manufacturing, vehicle service station, major and minor. We have also included some of the restrictions for users that are, that would need some restrictions to have them. So for example, for car wash, one mile of existing gas station, one mile of existing and tobacco retailer. It needs to have a one-mile buffer from existing plus five hundred feet of the existing means existing car wash or existing gas station, or existing tobacco retailer. And plus also five hundred feet distance from school, place of worship, library, playground, and park. For adult-use cannibies, we have included a buffer of five hundred feet from any uses. And it's not included here, but only one facility would be allowed in the city. So, we have included new missing middle users in the existing, in the proposed residential districts and commercial district where they're applicable, for example, dwelling duplex, triplex, quadplex, and townhomes. But they will be limited to a certain area. For example, if the lot has a frontage on Kent Road, Darrow Road, Fish Creek Road, Graham Road, Stowe Road, Hudson Road, Norton Road, or the lots are within the designated bus route area on Metro RTA Bus system map. Or the site is within the three hundred feet from two or more existing similar types of dwellings. Or it's near non-residential districts or multi-unit dwelling. Like similar type of dwelling. And this is the list of proposed accessory uses we have created, and some of that includes coop and related, we have included some of the new accessory uses according to feedback we receive from public, for example, coop and beekeeping and public art because we see that the city is creating new regulations for public art that will be included in this chapter as well, and some new uses such as accessory event menu, solar energy collection system related and related supplemental standards such as canopy, ground-mounted, and roof-mounted. For the temporary uses, they are either permitted or temporary uses. You can see P and T here. So the permitted uses means they are permitted without having a temporary use permit, and T means those users would need a temporary use permit. And we have included all the supplemental standards that would need, basic standards that would need to meet in order to get that temporary use permit from the city. So some of those new uses includes farm stand, food truck, mobile retail services, and specific even proposed to be allowed. Alright, the next one is chapter five subdivision standards. So, we have not made any major changes to the existing subdivision chapter, just made sure it's consistent. It's easy to read and consolidated the writing language from all of the chapters. And we have also got this reviewed multiple times from the engineering department. So most of the language you see here is defined by the engineer of the city. So, we have included various types of roadway, the street classification in this chapter, arterial, collector, parallel, local, single-family, local multifamily, and local industrial. For any of the development, if you see a diamond mark, it requires cross-section element if applicable on both sides of the street. And if you see a cross mark, it requires only identified in city adopted plan and policy. And if you don't see a mark, it's optional. So road-based stubs, we created a road-based stub language to replace of the temporary cul-de-sac we see. It makes sure there is a connectivity from underdeveloped property and subject property from the existing subdivision as you see in the middle, that there is an underdevelopment, undevelopment property, and there's a connectivity from both parts of the street to this roadway. So the, so the design, the roadway stub needs to meet the Ohio Fire Code, and there are some modifications we have added in this section. If it's the location of the stuff is adjacent to the property, and most of this section in this chapter are reviewed and approved through engineering department if they need any administrative adjustments. So we have also included conservation language to make sure we are preserving area that needs to be preserved, and also in create the development needed in that specific corridor. So subdivision type that allows clustering of development dwelling in exchange for preservation of thirty percent of development site as permanent conservation area. And this is allowed within R-one, R-two, and R-three districts. We have expanded the housing types to incentivize those uses. No lot area or width requirement, and minimum setbacks have been established to make sure we are creating denser development on the other side of the subdivision, and also conserving the land that needs to be conserved for the future. Chapter six is general development standards. So this chapter is going to include all the kind of development that, language that needs to apply throughout the city. For example, fence and wall, screening, vision triangle, outdoor lighting, underground utilities, town water management, erosion control, multi-building development standards, and any kind of maintenance needed. The purpose of this chapter is to promote the steam line development throughout the city, establish consistency in the land uses, and also support the orderly and sustainable development, and also encourage the creative and well-integrated neighborhoods in the city. So the first one is fence and wall requirements, fence and wall standards. So we have included the language for height, material opacity of the fence, and the orientation of it. It will help to create where the opacity needed, and where not, mostly for the residential dwellings on the interior or street side yards. We have also included the screening requirement for the users that are not very desirable to look at from the right-of-way. For example, waste receptacles, ground or wall-mounted building mechanical equipment, roof-mounted building equipment, or loading dock or truck parking area. These uses would mostly be included in industrial types of land uses, or regional, commercial, or industrial districts. The next one is outdoor lighting. We included this section to make sure we are not creating light pollution in the residential district, and also maintaining the specific requirement of temperature in the specific district. So, the design standards would include LED fixtures, color rendering, and the color temperature, backlight, uplight, and glare rating, foot candle, and illumination standards. For the multi-building development standards, we have created this for the mixed-use and multifamily kind of development to make sure we are not looking at the parking from the front when we are walking from the primary street to a secondary street, and we see the beautiful facades of the buildings. The next chapter is building design standards. So, per the feedback we receive from the steering committee and staff, we took a look at the comprehensive plan and also existing development, and made sure the proposed building design standards meet the materials, cladding, and some of the other design requirements from what we are seeing in existing developments. The purpose of the chapter is to make sure the physical character of the proposed development are compatible with context of the surrounding area, preserve the unique character of the streetscape, inspire places, and support the pedestrian experience, and also encourage creative and innovative environment. So the structure of this chapter includes multifamily and mixed-use, non-residential design standards, townhomes, and all missing middle design standards. The industrial district would not be included in this building design standards. So, these diagrams shows that we are going to have a building, facade design, and articulation, roof design overview for commercial and residential. And the thought process behind having this added into the zoning code is to make sure, moving forward, we have objective design standards, so it's more easier and streamlined to review and approve our stuff. And also for the applicant to read and understand. So the, the next one is exterior building cladding materials. We reviewed this with staff and made sure the materials we included for all these various types of building meet what would, what would you like to meet uh what would, what would you like to see in future and what kind of materials have been used currently. So this is the list you see for the tier one and tier two materials, uh for the multi-family residential, mixed-use and non-residential. We also made sure that the prohibited materials are consistent throughout uh all the types of design standards. And also made sure some of these uh higher quality tier one materials are consistent in all three. For example, brick and interior to like natural and synthetic stucco including E I Fs. So the next one is building entry design, um it is applicable to each building entrances, mostly multi-family um and commercial, it includes entrance design types and one of, one of this type needs to be selected by the developer if they want to make any of these facades. And it applies to building entrance on front or street facing elevations only. So the next one is glazing, uh we have included the grazing requirement for mixed-use overlay and commercial district to make sure of the glazing percentage requirement is made according to what city would like to see. For example, for front elevation sixty percent for mixed-use um overlay and for street side elevation forty percent. And for commercial district forty percent for front elevation and for street side twenty percent. It's hard to understand from the percentage, but the diagram is helping to understand how much the forty percent actually means. It's almost like less than half of the building elevation. So the chapter eight is social gathering and open space, tree preservation and landscape standards. The purpose of this chapter is to make sure we preserve and enhance the character of the city. Provide enough amount of social gathering and open spaces throughout the city and also improve the environmental quality in the city and also make sure like we are not creating noise, glare, view of the parking and serving or loading areas and there is enough buffer throughout this mixed-use land uses. So in social gathering space standards, um we have included how much gathering space percentage required throughout these various districts. Um and also included um points according to the size of the specific development. Um and on the right hand, you see that these numbers are the points that the applicant or the developer needs to meet if they want to make the development with the so, uh social gathering space. And we have also have added, this is not a complete list, but we have included a good list of um improvement types uh which will give them the points that would need here uh to meet the social gathering space improvement requirement. Uh we have included diverse list of improvement types, so we can see a great amount of amenities throughout the city and the applicant can also get interesting list of improvements in their development. The next one is transition standards, uh we have included three various types of buffer. One with um denser amount of trees and shrubs, one with less denser amount of trees and shrub with the fence. Uh so these two types um of each, two options of each would be applied to uh buffer multi-family from residential districts with type A, B and C buffer, type A um is more intense one and type B is the moderately intense and the C is not intense. So if the residential, for example, is if a single family unit is um adjacent to quadplex, they would need a C type buffer because they would need a less privacy. And if it's um adjacent to any commercial development, they would need more denser buffer to make that privacy perfect. We have also added national landscape area language, uh because we saw that the city currently has tall grass ordinance that says that um that the grass or weed would only can uh grow up to eight inches. Um and that is causing a violation of wild yard that some uh some people would like to, some residents would like to have in their um yards, backyards. So the natural landscape, the new regulations would allow this native or wild landscape outside of the landscape area and covers up to fifty percent of the yard space. Uh it need to maintain fifteen foot setback from the property line, building and street. Um and also the public parks are exempted from this requirement and as this is mostly applicable to residential district only. The next chapter is chapter nine, access and mobility standards. Um the access and mobility standards would include the right of way, driveway, parking, bike and trail and pedestrian walkway requirements in the zoning code to make sure uh we are maintaining the safety also providing enough number of parking spaces and uh bike bicycle parkings. As we are talking about mixes development and walkability, we would need bicycle parking and also making sure we are prioritizing the human scale more and not the parking lots and concrete and imperious cover. So in new zoning code, uh we have reduced the parking requirements. We saw that uh the current code was providing more number of parking than needed. Uh so we have reduced it to make sure we meet the industrial standards, for example, town home and many of the other commercial uh uses. So we have also included bicycle parking requirements for multi-family, mixed-use and non-residential uh short-term bike requirement, short-term bicycle parking requirement for non-residential and long-term requirement for multi-family and residential. This is the table, uh this is not a complete table again, but just shows an example of how we have created uh the clean, organized um minimum parking requirement for the city. Uh that shows it meets the um industry requirements, it's not like more than needed parking. When I was like driving on the Graham Road this evening, I noticed that there was a huge amount of parking lot in from, of the commercial development that was not needed. Uh and we think that need to minimize the minimum parking space, so we can take more human scale environment to the city. The next chapter is sign standards. Um this is a completely proposed chapter, but we made sure we do not create a non-conformity and just um include all the existing signs that cities allowing with better regulations and streamlined requirements. The purpose of this chapter is to enhance the physical character, um appearance of the signs and reduce the sign distraction um to which, which may cause traffic accidents, eliminate any hazard caused by unsafe signs, um relieve pedestrian and traffic congestion and avoid the cancelling out effect of adjacent signs. Also making sure the signs are content neutral. So we have created a table based off of land uses for the permitted and allowed signs by lands. Uh the solid dot shows that, shows the specific signs that requires a sign permit and needs to uh meet the code regulations of this chapter and any other regulations from the code. And the non-solid dot um says that it's allowed without any permit, but it still needs to meet any other um language in the code. And the blank uh rows so says that um these signs are not permitted within this specific land uses. So these are some of the diagrams uh we are going to include in the proposed code, so it's easy to understand to the applicant uh how much the massing of the area or a specific height or the projection would look like uh when they create um any standards in their building. Same for the temporary signs. The chapter eleven, floodplain development standards, um we have not made any changes to this chapter. We are maintaining the existing language as it is, just cleaned it up and made sure everything regarding the floodplain is included in one chapter. For chapter twelve is review, decision-making enforcement procedure. Uh this chapter would include all the types of applications and who will be reviewing those application according to the level of the uh criticalness. So the purpose of this, uh this chapter is to establish the power and duties of parties responsible to administrator this zoning code and establish all review and decision-making process and address the enforcement and penalties in objective manner in the code. So there are three types of application process, the first one is administrative review and decision-making. I'm sorry, I mean to say administrative adjustments is one of the application type. And this uh table here shows that all of these application would need to go through administrative process. So the pre-application needs to be submitted and it needs to be accepted by the city and then planning director, city engineer or floodplain administrator reviews and approves it. And um as we have mentioned, administrative adjustment throughout the code for some of the requirements such as setback not met, height, science uh requirements, etcetera, that would, that will be reviewed. Um and this, the list on your right side is not the complete list, but some of the um code sections that would uh get administrative adjustment from there. For example, height, fence and opacity, lighting standards, roof plan articulations um from the code. And that will be reviewed and approved by the planning director. The standards or like review criteria, criteria would be it needs to meet what is mentioned in the language uh and requires when maximum extent type of adjustment is specified in the code. So the next, these three applications would be reviewed and approved through plan, planning commission review. Uh the planning commission would be a decision maker on these three application types. For example, um not example, these three types, subdivision major, preliminary plan, master sign plan and permit and sign variance. So these needs to go through pre-application, then planning director review and planning commission would be reviewing and approving it, reviewing and approving this. All of these um remaining ones you see on your left side are the city council review and decision-making procedure types of applications. So similar, now the pre-application and the application submitter, planning director reviews it and uh planning commission is going to recommend for city council to either approve or deny or approve it conditions. Alright, so the next one is non-conformities chapter. Um as you all know that um this proposed code might be create non-conformity, non-conforming laws, non-conforming uses throughout the city, we acknowledge that the legal status of the non-conforming laws should be maintained. Uh so we have created a language to make sure the building structure, site elements uses and any site that were legally established prior to this code um would need to be amended um while providing regulation for their continuation and alignment with the new standards. Uh we also have added a language to limit the expansion, restoration and deconstruction replacement of these uh non-conforming lot, building or structure, site elements, sign and uses. So moving forward, all of this existing non-conforming lots and uses would be um regulated as they are. And if they need to make any major changes, they need to go through the proposal in code. Apart from that, we have not made a major change to what you have currently in the existing non-conformities chapter. So the last chapter is definitions. Um in this chapter, uh we have clearly defined um all the terms and land uses. Uh we have mentioned in throughout the code to make sure it is easy to interpret what that specific land use means. Um if the term is not defined in the chapter, it shall be defined with its everyday meaning and determined by the dictionary definition though. Uh and we have also like created a structure like A, B, C, D or the alphabetical definitions, so it's easy to read and understand. And also included, sorry, also included the rules for construction and how to interpret something. For example, how to measure a height, how to see a sit setback or something. So it's uh so planning director doesn't have to explain it all the time, it's like clearly objectively mentioned in the city code. Alright, the next step is um as Zach mentioned, uh we are in the process of finalizing the code. Uh and we have in the last, um in the last fifteen days of, three weeks ago, uh we had a pre-adoption public outreach uh with the city, um citizens and we are gonna have the adoption meetings upcoming next month, month or two for the city council adoption. Alright, thank you so much. If you have any questions, I know it was like a lot of information, maybe like eighty slides to um here and we are like happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much.
Nineteen months.
Any questions? Any comments from the audience? I do.
Yeah, I think that's, I think so.
Special signs. Yes, it is. Just don't rake your leaves into the street.
Hey, started construction a couple of weeks on that, so. Yeah.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
What's gonna happen to our beautiful orange sign?
We'll, we'll leave it there, yeah. Yeah, but no, um, yeah, I know, I know we've kind of planned commission a few times with presenting all this information, so hopefully this is more of a refresher. Good. Um, yeah, I appreciate you guys, you know, working through, you know, working with us through the last year and a half. Um, yeah, if there's anything you have in mind that we have an answer or anything that you have questions on, let us know.
I think it's pretty complete.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Well then, is there a motion? No, we have, we have to pass this.
I know.
We either have to pass it or we have to deny it, one of the two, but you have, you have to.
I'll make a motion to approve PC twenty twenty-five dash O thirty-two zoning code update as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve PC twenty twenty-five dash zero three two, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any other business? Have a motion for adjournment?
A motion to adjourn.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.